Yeah.
Give me the thing I can slide my over. Go ahead and start this board supervisor meeting and welcome everyone here and I've asked supervisor David Gomez to lead us into the play.
Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and as we can public for which stands. While the nation under God, if it is all who lives being adjusted for all that.
Well, but tonight you said it twice.
Okay, well. Thank you supervisor Gomez. And we'll now go to one B called the public. Is there anyone that liked it? Boarding called the public. Yes, yeah.
Yes, Tim Sumner, Green County Sheriff, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and staff. Um, Mr. Chair, you were there recently at the fairgrounds for that. Unfortunate circumstance that so many people were there for is a great turnout. And it got me thinking, a lot of people were talking about the chairs and things like that. I know quite a few had to come from the schools, from the Duncan Unified School District to help. Help kind of backfill some of the shortage there, but uh, I didn't know if that's something that as a whole. Green County want to look at possibly purchasing some more chairs. I mean, it is the largest venue really in the county and can hold a lot of people, but. It makes it pretty hard and limited when the, the lack of chairs are there. And I know the school district helped out and that's really beneficial, but. Like I said, you were there. I just didn't know if that was something that I'm not sure how expensive chairs are, if that's something that could maybe pick up a, a few more. A dozen or a hundred or whatever may be. So um, just like I said, people brought it up and as you know, a lot of standing going on, but there's a lot of large, large crowd there too. So. Um, also wanted to, uh, you know, command Mr. Austin Adams. Here for the last meeting, I know he had to step in and fill in and down your, your clerk and your administrator and both those people that filled in did a, did a great job, kept, kept the meeting flowing really quick. And. I think that's maybe one of the record times for getting out of here on that meeting. That was great. So uh, good job. A couple of other things I had, one was the um. I've been looking at a lot of other, other counties. Um, uh, just going on their websites for the other counties, looking at their board information, their board meetings and packets particularly. And I just want to bring that up again. I know it's been quite, quite a while since I talked about it, but the board packets, they're available. If you go and look, I started looking at Hila, Cochise, Patchy, Navajo. Um, you know, Graham La Paz, uh, Santa Cruz, Mojave has looked around. I think I looked at all the ASAP counties. I didn't look at Maha, Pima and Maricopa. Um, yet, but the ones we compare ourselves to a lot. And I know you like to talk about the comparison with other counties. When you go there and look, their, their agenda packets are there. I'm talking about the packets that you gentlemen receive. And that you have that used to be there. Remember about a year and a half time. The packets were available and I know talking to some other people, you know, I just got asked about a packet when I walked in. Uh, because there's a few select people who put in a ongoing public records requests like myself who get those things, just like you gentlemen do. So I get your entire packet, but that. It used to always be available online. And um, if you go look at these other ones, they're there. They are, um, they're there. You can click on it. You can see Coconino had to think 597 pages. Um, other ones had 200, some had a hundred and something, but whatever it is for their regular meeting, it's there. It's not. It's not a secret. It's not hidden information and stuff that people should have a right to see and access to. So I really can sit, ask you to look at that. Don't take my word for it. Look into it and uh, consider that please. People really want to know. They want to see that information and you used to do it and I think it's a good thing. Um, the last thing I recently had to deal with, uh, employee that's no longer with me, um, but uh, asking about marijuana use and that, you know, since it's legalized and. And things that I actually got a letter today from another county employee outside of my department, talking about. County employee who's using marijuana and it's one of those things. I don't know if that's something that the board has an appetite to try to address or look at, to look at the policies to see if those policies need to be updated. Cliff just did at their last meeting. I know a lot of other governing bodies have, so it's just one of those things. I think we probably need to address it at some point. We meaning you guys, actually, I guess not me. If you want me to be a part of that, I can, but thank you for your time. Um, that's all I had. So thanks.
You. Anyone else like to address the board in public? Okay, thank you. Then we'll go to agenda item two and the board supervisor convene at the board of directors of the Green County Public Service District. After order of business will reconvene as the board supervisors, a consent agenda.
So move that we approve the consent agenda is posted.
I'll second that.
A motion second. Is there any discussion? Hearing now will proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. We are now convened as the board supervisors. And the board supervisor convene as the board director of the county blood control district. After order of business, we'll reconvene as the board of supervisors, a consent agenda.
The move that we approve the consent agenda is posted.
I'll say it.
A motion of second, is there any discussion? Thinking now will proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. We are now convened as the board of supervisors. We will go to agenda item four. Uh, Mr. Sumner, you was asked to address the board on agenda item four.
Yes, sir. Tim Sumner, Green County Sheriff, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and staff. This one, I just wanted to say, uh, it's great to see. Mr. Sullivan here and all the great work that he does. I, I know that um, I've seen him in action down at the legislature before and you know, he does a great job. He's very well versed and does a great job. And. I just wanted to be on record too to come and uh, welcome him here and say it's glad, I'm glad to have you here. It's, it's good to see you again. I'm glad you're here in Green County. So I just wanted to be, be on record, uh, saying that there for him. So welcome here and look forward to your presentation as well. So.
Thank you. We now turn time over to Craig Solomon, Executive Director. County Supervisor Association and, and would you please introduce your staff? There are some great people there.
I thank you very much. I'd be glad to. And just for the record, I'm Craig Solomon, the County Supervisors Association. Thank you very much, members of the board for giving me this opportunity and sheriff for your kind words. I do appreciate it. I did bring some reinforcements with me today for the PowerPoint presentation. Vanessa Fielder, right here, Jacob Emnet. And Ivan Ortega. And so we were really excited to come up here and visit with all of you today and talk a little bit about what the association's been doing. Uh, on the behalf of your board and your colleague boards across the state. So we do appreciate this opportunity. Now, am I going to be just flagging to move this? Okay, perfect. So Mr. Chairman, what I gave you was a, a report that talks about a whole bunch of items that we're engaged in, our capacity development efforts, our research and analytics function. And then of course I talk a little bit about the legislature. There's a lot of detail in here, um, but just in the interest of time, I thought I'd just move some of this through some of the select items. Uh, and highlight those. And if there are any questions that you have, I'm happy to address them in detail. Uh, but just to begin with. I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members for your involvement in our association. Uh, we really are grateful to have you as part of our collaboration with all the other counties. I know your colleagues feel the same way. Uh, we have a very strong partnership of county elected officials and it really pays dividends and it's in large part because of your involvement. So I want to thank you for that. And I want to extend my appreciation to Mr. Ray Pier too. Uh, we work diligently with the county managers across the state. And we're very grateful for all the information you share with us and the good work you do with us to help us support Greenlee County's interests. Uh, it really is a team effort and I'm, I'm proud to, to work with each of you. So in walking through the PowerPoint, let me touch briefly on who we are. Uh, next slide. Um, the County Supervisors Association, for those who may not know, is a collaboration of the 15 counties. The supervisors serve as our board of directors, uh, from each county and we're really focused on information development. Uh, using our organization as a nonpartisan forum to talk about issues that affect. Local government and then to serve as an intergovernmental office, supporting uh, county supervisors and the issues that you're working on here locally. That's really what we're about. And the intergovernmental piece on the next slide is very important because as you know. There are all manner of other entities, the legislature, state agencies, the court system that affect what you're doing. And so by working in collaboration with those other entities, we're able to all uh, do better, uh, work better to support constituencies locally. And that's really what it's all about. Jump up two slides, one more. All right. So moving through the packet, I'll first talk a little bit about capacity development and information sharing. This is just a splash of information for you, uh, but it focuses on the things we do to bring in. Top quality speakers like elected officials, policymakers, state agency leaders and policy experts. To talk about issues affecting county government. And this gives you a sense of the folks who came through. Uh, to meet with you and your colleagues over the last year. And of course, we've been doing that in person as well as online. We also spend a lot of time supporting what we call affiliate groups. These are the county managers group, the engineers, the planning directors, the finance directors and others. Where we really try to build a partnership among the counties, uh, at the professional staff level to support each other in how we're supporting you as well. And the final piece about capacity development and information sharing is on the left. And these are items where we're representing the county's interests. In various work groups and stakeholder groups, uh, to carry forward information from all of you. And the big three that are occurring right now are these. Uh, we're all focused on how counties can best pull down the federal bead dollars into your region. And so we're trying to serve as a hub for the counties to engage with the governor's office and the commerce authority. To maximize the opportunity for all of us to do that. That's a total team effort across the counties. You all are involved in that. The second key item is our engagement with the PSPRS Board of Trustees. All of the counties have financial liability with the PSPRS system. This is law enforcement pension systems. We have to be an engaged informed stakeholder. To provide our perspective on how best to make sure those benefits are paid at the most afford or the cheapest possible taxpayer cost. So we spent a lot of time on that and we'll continue to. And then the final one emerged this year where we are tapped into the governor's water council. Uh, I'm serving in that capacity. Mr. Lunt, you've been very engaged in those dialogues as well to follow it and track it. But that's going to be an ongoing effort too. And I'll talk more about the water piece in a little bit. Next slide please. So these next couple of slides, I'm going to break down the uh, research and data initiative that our team is uh, deploying. And that Ms. Fielder with me today, uh, manages this function for us. Um, but as you know, uh, we've been focused for years on building a research and analytics function. That allows us to bring the best possible analysis and information to the table to make informed decision making. At your, at, at boards of supervisors as well as the legislature. And so this is an ongoing effort that we continue to engage in and I'll share a couple of things with you related to it. First is the data collection continues to grow and grow. We have more than four million data points in our data uh, database. And we're starting to put those out in, on platforms that you're able to access our county encyclopedia, county revenue dashboard, employment dashboard. We're building out other uh, visualizations and dashboards over the course of the summer and we'll be rolling those out over the course of the fall. And it's all about getting more information on the table for you all to, to have at your fingertips and those of your professional staff. When we're applying data, we identify key research projects and these are some of the research efforts that are ongoing currently, uh, that we've been engaged in. The one that I'll pull out to discuss briefly is related to workforce challenges. As you know. Every government is dealing with workforce recruitment and retention problems. It is a significant challenge in every function of government. Um, we talk regularly at our manager's group about that. One of the items that emerged a year ago. Was the legislature tasked the PSPRS system. To create a work group to look at law enforcement recruitment and retention. We were assigned to that task force. In sitting on that task force, we recognized that folks were just sharing anecdotes, but there wasn't a whole lot of good data to really inform decision making. And so our team identified a grant with the Arizona Board of Regents for $800,000. To uh, allocate to the universities to participate in developing information to support that dialogue. And so while this is not our initiative, um, we have been supporting the project management and we helped bring assets to the table. To, to get better information in this process. And these are the universities that have all stepped up to participate. And you can get a sense of the different functions and, and support services that they're providing. Um, this was really exciting for us because as we go forward, we're looking at additional opportunities to partner with the universities on problems facing county governments. This shows you how we're uh, managing some of those projects that I just uh. Flashed for you very briefly. And the key takeaway is here, you know, all of these projects are big ticket items and they roll over time. When we get to the summit, uh, when we all meet with all of your colleagues in October, we'll report out on the status of these projects. And some of them will be nearing completion. Just as importantly, our team will be rolling on some research ideas going into the next year. And so we'll talk with you a little bit about some priorities that we can explore, uh, rolling in. And the vision is just to create, create a rolling effort. Of high quality research projects that we have available to inform our advocacy and inform decision making. So that's enough about capacity development and our research and analytics piece. I want to spend a few slides on the legislative piece because as you know. It's a big part of what we do and Jacob Emnet supports that as our legislative liaison. You know, Robin Hilliard served with us for many years. In an intergovernment capacity too. I will be missing her going forward. Um, but the primary uh, activity here is really just to advance priorities of the counties and then to respond to all the bills that come into process. This was the latest session that we've had on record. And so we did go right into the first week of August. That means that bills are not effective until October 30th. So that's pretty late. Now to support all of you in the implementation of those new bills, uh, Jacob has distributed our summary. Of all the new bills that are coming online and please share that with your professional staff. It's a tool for them to help navigate some of these new items. But by and large, it was a decent year legislatively, just a lot of basic government stuff. And what I'd like to do is just talk a little bit about the budget and then a few of those bills, but it's always worth noticing. How the budget process works because it affects all of us. If we go back to the beginning of the session, we knew that the legislature had a lot of one-time money and no real ongoing spending capacity. So the whole trajectory at the legislature was everybody figuring out that fact. And they ultimately did. The governor's office and leadership got together relatively early and came up with a budget package that split up. All of this one-time money, uh, basically by giving allocations to members. Uh, and then agreeing not to do ongoing spending. And on this next slide, you're going to see what some of that looked like and it's pretty profound. So a little hard to see, but I'll break down some of the key numbers for you. There was two and a half billion dollars of one-time money that was allocated by the legislature this year. You can see the big buckets on the left of how those got, got broken down. And so the areas won't surprise you. Transportation projects, education, infrastructure. There was a one-time income tax rebate, spending on housing. Uh, and, and other types of one-time capital projects. And so an enormous amount of one-time spending, I think there were more than. 300 individual line items that were in the budget. They did not do ongoing spending. And I wanted to flag a key data point for you here in fiscal year 2024. Where you can see that the ending balance is projected to be just under $8 million. So on a budget that big, that's really spending all your money down, right? Now I'm not criticizing that. I'm just sharing that what that means is that it is necessarily going to be a tight budget year going into the next legislative session. And as we see revenues roll on from the Department of Revenue, we're seeing the economy soften a little bit, right? The income taxes, I'm sorry, uh. Uh, sales taxes are softening and we may see the same on income taxes going forward. So we're going to have to be very attentive about the, the condition. Of state finances because as you know, their problems tend to roll downhill. Although unlike the Great Recession, they do have a much healthier rainy day fund than they did at that time. So enormous one-time spending, uh, no meaningful ongoing spending. This slide will show you, we just uh, took an effort at categorizing a bunch of these items by transportation projects, local water projects, local distributions. And we, when we put them on a map all across the state and you can see where all those landed. There was not a particularly uh, meaningful project in Greenlee County this year in this budget. There was an expenditure on 191, as you know, uh, in prior budgets, but there was not a new project allocated. Uh, in this one, but you can see there were any number of projects allocated around the state. And on this next slide, you'll see just some of the key county touchpoints and what some of those projects went for. Any number of things. Do you want to identify the water projects? This was interesting because as you know, uh, Mr. Lunt, there was a deposit due to the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority. To support augmentation. About half of that was earmarked for various water projects. And so some of that was taken away. Still helps on water issues, but it wasn't targeted towards augmentation. Next slide please. So this shows some of the items that we were particularly interested in. And there's a few that I'll hit for you. You all know that in the court system, probation officers are employees of the judiciary, they're statewide, they're employees of the statewide judiciary. And they're really important on what they do for the criminal justice system. The board's role has historically been to set those salaries for probation officers. Based on recommendations from the, from the, from the judge. And then the state would backfill that, right? That's how the model worked. Well, the model is in flux right now and there's some potential of more state cost shifting for the state's judiciary in probation. Now, not, this is not happening this year because the courts have worked with us and they worked with the legislature to get some dollars on the table. And I want to give. The Arizona Office of the Courts credit for fighting for that. But because they did not do ongoing spending, they did not do ongoing commitments to the probation officers in the judiciary as well. And so that's an issue that's going to have to get resolved. Who's going to pay the ongoing commitment? For those important offices. And we are talking with the judiciary about how to do that. The, the second item is about the EOR repayment. Now this is the elected officials retirement plan. It's a closed plan, no new entrance. The courts have ruled that we must pay this liability. It's contractual obligation. And so what our team came up with. Was a plan working with the appropriations chairman in the house that would have the state essentially front money into the plan. And then we would pay back the state essentially like finding a lower interest rate loan. And this plan would have saved the taxpayers statewide about 677 million dollars. It would have cost the state about 400 million, but remember they had 2.5 billion on the table and then would have saved the taxpayers well north of 600 million. Because of the way the legislature put the budget together, which was largely, you know, what project do you want? That type of thing. It didn't allow for big ticket, good government policies like that. And so I wanted to, to identify that because while we had some decent champions and interest in the policy item. The budget negotiation didn't allow for that. And I would characterize that as uh, not a good thing, you know, uh, this was an opportunity to solve big problems. And it's disappointing that we weren't able to, to solve that. So what it means is we're on the status quo trajectory with the repayment. Of the EOR obligation and we have made some policy changes. To affect, to lower the volatility of that debt, uh, where we got PSPRS to make some modifications, but we weren't able to do the accelerated lower cost paydown. And then at the bottom, just on infrastructure matching funds, we've been asking for the state to put more and more money into pots at ADOT. And AOC, we've been doing this for a few years, just to be available for matching. They put in place 23.6 million and 12.5 million. It would have been nice to put more in those buckets, but given the nature of this budget too, people wanted projects, not so much just earmarking money to be on the side. The next slide just shows bills we ran for our member counties. So I was very proud of the work that Jacob did on that to get those bills through the legislature. Kudos to Jacob. And we were pleased that we can move those off the list. Transitioning a little bit into what a lot of the organization does, and that is just reactive advocacy, dealing with the hundreds of bills that come into the legislative process. Mr. Lunt, thank you for serving on our legislative policy committee and, and Derek for you for providing feedback into all these bills that come in. We wouldn't know what to do on a lot of them without your feedback. And so I want to express my gratitude. It was a good year working with lawmakers. Amending bills that we had concerns with and defeating bad bills. And I'll go through a couple of slides in this space. This just gives you a sense of all the policy areas that we worked on, all things you know well. The next slide. Just kind of highlights the veto tracker. And as you well know, um, this governor has vetoed more bills than we've ever seen in history, tapped out at 143. These are bills that were of concern that I won't spend a whole lot of time on, but I wanted them in your report because we're probably going to see a lot of these items come back, but they were all defeated in the process this year. And this slide's about bills that are coming your way. So these are all enacted bills, uh, that um, we'll be implementing at the county level. And it gives you a sense of the policy areas. I put all these up here really to flag the policy areas for instructive purposes. But largely these are not big deal bills. They're just basic getting things done, making some tweaks, improving stuff. And so that was a, a real good collaboration with lawmakers, um, on a lot of these. And so I don't know that there's a, a whole lot that I would flag here. I'll talk a little bit about elections and then water. Um, there's a lot of content on this, um, but that belies the fact that there wasn't much actual enacting, bills enacted on elections, right? We saw 119 bills into the process related to elections, about 30 some odd got to the governor. Only one was signed into law. Why is that? Because the governor's got a um, task force looking at election processes. It's bipartisan task force. So she's going to park. The conversation there. And then a lot of these bills that came in really were partisan bills, messaging bills, uh, depending on what you were looking at. And so a lot of them just really weren't workable, uh, at the local level. I want to extend my appreciation to our colleagues over at ACO, uh, that their team works with recorders and the election directors. They do a lot of work on elections. And they did a solid job getting good information on the table. We are nonpartisan on elections. Our lens is simply. What does it take to make this system work? And we want to make sure that we're, uh, that we have guidance from the legislature that is implementable and is something that we can deliver. And so that's where, what usually guides our position. Next slide's about water. And a lot here too, but not a whole lot happened at the legislature. I talked earlier about. The earmarking of money that was to be deposited at WIFA for water augmentation purposes. Some of that was allocated for water projects. Most of the action is over on the executive side where we've got the governor's water council and uh, we've got DWR involved in various activities. And um, Mr. Lunt, I do want to. You know, acknowledge your hard work, tracking all of this stuff. I know you always make sure that you're plugging in and tracking it. I sent out an email earlier today that broke down some of the work. That's happening in the rural groundwater management committee. That is part of the governor's council. Um, it also includes work, uh, that is part of the. Active management area committee. And so the focus of this whole thing is groundwater, right? Not rivers. It's all groundwater and I wanted you to see what they're talking about. I know Mr. Lunt, you had already seen a lot of it. We'll have to deliberate some of these policy items and provide feedback. As we go forward, but it's a big ticket item that uh, folks are spending a lot of time on. We'll bounce to the next one. Go to the next. Just in the interest of time. What this shows you are just some of the reports that we've shipped out and I just want them to be uh, in front of you. So you and your professional staff. Know of the resources that are available for implementing information, you know, new bills, budget items and all of that related. To what the state just did and all, and, and the work that it completed. Our legislative summary, that really held up a lot because we had to wait for the session to end, but that's happened. State budget, county touchpoints, county finance officer guide. Revenue expenditure report and county flexibility. We spent a lot of time drafting reports after sessions, right? It's how we wrap up one session. But we immediately begin planning for the next one. And so these reports are all out there. If you want to take a nap, start. But we immediately begin planning for the next one. And so these reports are all out there. If you want to take a nap, start reading one. And it'll help get you to that. Uh, but we are focused now on getting ready for the next session. And so I put a little information for you here. But the big takeaway is simply this, we're going to meet in October, uh, to have our policy summit. In Coquenino County, as you know, that's where we set our agenda. Uh, please join us. I've been grateful at your participation in that. Over the years, it's a pleasure to have you at the table and have your voice here. Uh, and we'll look forward to, to seeing you there. Uh, so Mr. Chairman, thanks for all the time, but I just wanted to close by again, thanking you for your partnership in the association. And I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Oliver? I don't have any.
I don't have such a comment.
Go ahead.
No, just a, a comment, Greg. I mean, CSA is invaluable. I mean, obviously to county supervisors and I'm sure that I speaks for all of them, but, but there. There are literally, in conservatively, hundreds of different topics that we. We have to deal with, you know, all the time in, in this role. And there is not anything that we've ever reached out to CSA that you have not been able to help us with. And I just think that that is an incredible, uh. Tool for our toolbox to be able to, to have your support and, and your entire team. And so I just wanted to say thank you.
It's our pleasure.
You've always been there and you, you've always been able to provide information that I've requested and it's, it's, it's amazing. So thank you for all the, thank you, sir.
Thank you. And Craig, just, I, I did his comments, but it's been said that, uh. A million dollar manager surrounds himself with two million dollar people. And I think your staff. Is beyond exceptional. And that's the reason we're able to get the things done that we get done over there. So kudos to you, to the staff. Thank you for bringing them here. We, we appreciate seeing them. Not when we're having to ask them for something, you know, hey, Vanessa, will you give me the, no. And, and, but thank you. And staff, we do appreciate what you do. You do a lot of the. The number crunching and, and analyzing and we appreciate it. But I mean that. You're two million dollar people and I. I speak on behalf of this board and probably all of us at Greenlee County. So with that, thank you, Greg, for being here. And, uh, say, are you, you going to stick around or are you guys headed back tonight or?
We're, we're actually heading down to Bisbee to see Mike. So we're a little more road tripping.
Copper Queen, huh?
Yeah. We're predictable.
Anyway, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, uh, we'll go to Agenda Item Five. And Ms. Sumner, you have asked to talk on Agenda Item Five, please.
Yes, sir, I did. Tim Sumner, Greenlee County Sheriff. On item number five, I'm just, uh. By this bits contract is being brought up again to discuss, you know, a year and a half ago, many of the elected officials in Greenlee County. Uh, we're displeased with the quality of the IT and customer service within the IT department and brought that before the administrator who in turn brought it to you and had bits, uh, perform an outside audit. Um, in the midst of that, uh, bits ultimately won, of course, the contract bid, um, out of several companies that put in for that. Um, I've still been contacted by, uh, a couple of those. There was a recent, uh, local Greenlee County business who actually reached out and, uh. Stated that, um, he'd be available and willing to put in a bid request when it opens up this year. However, he was told by the upper level management. There are hap, they are happy with bits and will most likely auto renew the contract and not put it out for bid. Um, again, this is a, a local company actually here in Greenlee County that had contacted me unsolicited for me reaching out. Um, I, I spoke to, I had spoke to a couple of other businesses who had submitted RFPs though, um, who were interested in, uh, putting that in. I still think that, um, you know, with, uh, bits, I know that there's a data point survey that they, I'm sure they're going to address probably here shortly. Um, you know, a lot of, uh, employees were not aware of that. At one point I finally selected that item when you receive an IT ticket that should be dismissed. And I actually clicked on the survey link for the first time, um, had a, um. A low score to put on there, a negative comment. And, uh, I think it was next day in the parking lot right out here, one of the bits employees walked up to me and. Said, oh, hey sheriff, we got your negative comment. We, we were laughing about it in the office. And so I said, well, that's how feedback is received. That's probably not, uh, not good. Um, it was right here in this parking lot, walking into the building. And so just in a way, you kind of made a mockery of the, um. Feedback system. And so I wasn't too pleased with that. Speaking with some other electives and some other, uh. Officials as well and some other employees who have not utilized that service and still has some concerns. I think it's healthy. I think it's good to go out for bid again on the contract. This is a new, uh. Um, a new paradigm shift, as you said, for Greenlee County as a whole, to remove IT services, uh, within Greenlee County and go outside. Um, after the, the course of the year and evaluating that. Um, I know in my office, we have a lot of issues right now, particularly we have an issue with the Arizona Department of Public Safety. Um, who's threatening to shut down our, uh, NCIC, a CEGIS. This is actually FBI standards that, um. All outside vendors, every, uh, employee of their company must possess and renew as required by law. Their certification process for CEGIS, the National Crime, um, Information, uh, Computer System that goes nationally to run people's. License, registrations, check on warrants, their criminal histories, everything, pretty much everything our office does, which would greatly hamper the sheriff's office to lose that certification process. I did speak with Mr. Kwame about that, but when he was doing the audit, I spoke with him after he won the bid and yet. We still had some issues. There was one employee who finally got it. That employee is no longer here. That was after quite a bit of persistent persistence from my dispatch sergeant. I think it's a healthy thing to go out to bid again. And if, uh, bits wins again, so be it. They'll be back here again. I think, uh, competition is a healthy thing. I think it's something especially with this. First year in this, I think it'd probably be healthy to go back out and look at a bidding process just to see what options are still out there. Um. And my time's up. So thank you for your time.
We'll turn the time over now to Derek Redd, please.
Thank you very much. Um. This has been a, a, uh, a paradigm shift. It has been a shift in the way we do business. Um, it has been a shift in the way we think about how we do IT services. I've asked, um, Mr. Kwame to give a presentation on, uh, bits view of where the, the environment they found when they got here. Uh, what they've been doing, what they've been working on and, uh, how they handle and manage the, um, the tickets and so forth. So with that, I, I asked that he, uh, give his presentation and I'll have a little bit more to say about, uh, our recommendation staff for what we do going forward.
Thank you. Um, it's been a, a, a pleasure over the past year.
State your name, please.
Name is, uh, Kim Kwame.
Uh, thank you.
Better IT Services. Um, it has been a pleasure over the past year to, uh, take on the challenge of working with Greenlee County and helping, uh, move the, uh, IT systems forward. Uh, in a professional manner. Um, and I wanted to take a, an opportunity to give you just a little bit of a, a first year review of, uh, our activities and. What we've been working on, uh, the successes that we've had and some of the bumps, uh, in the road as we have come on board with the county. So, uh, first off, uh, wanted to put up, uh, who the support staff for Greenlee County is from Better IT Services. Uh, I'm the account manager. Um. Rob Puckett is your regional manager. You've seen, uh, him up here a few times. He's also our, um, AV subject matter expert. And so he's come up and worked on the system, uh, several times. Um, Systems Architect, uh, is Zean Zarif and, uh, he's actually, uh, inbound driving in from, from Phoenix. Uh, he is going to be, uh, starting to spend two weeks out of every three here, uh, flying in from North Carolina. Um, through the rest of this fiscal year to assist with some of the very large, uh, upgrade projects that we were able to get into the FY budget for this year. Um, we have two sysadmins that work on the systems, David Musial and Damar Bowman. And they work, uh, as part of our enterprise engineering team. They work remotely. Um, our network engineer that's also on the enterprise engineering team, uh, for this account is James LaComte. Uh, and then onsite, we have Adam Novo. Uh, Adam is actually, uh, transferring in from, uh, Atlanta, Georgia, or, uh, from Georgia. Uh, to here. He's, he's moving out in October. He's, he's, uh, going to be full time in Greenlee County, uh, has decided this is a beautiful place to live and. And, uh, his fiancee and, uh, and kids will be joining him out here. Um, and then Martine Palomino, who is also resident, uh, here in Greenlee County. And then Bob Soroka will be, um, joining us on September first as part of our, some of our new hires. And Bob will be available for work down at the, uh, Duncan Annex. Uh, he'll be resident in, uh, in Duncan. So next slide. So as we, when we first came on board, we said there would be three phases of work to kind of get, get going with the county. Um, and these are, are pretty standard, uh, in the, in the support industry. The first phase was gain control. Go ahead. The second phase, after we'd gained control of the environment would be improved security, reliability and resilience. And the first third phase, then once we had. Managed to stabilize the environment and secure it, uh, we would begin to enhance functionality, uh, for the departments and for the county. Under gain control, we worked to get access to all the systems and to document the environment. Um. These, this was more difficult than we initially, uh, thought. Uh, during the initial assessment, uh, when we were based on, uh, interviews with the previous IT department, um. We were led to believe the documentation was more accurate and complete than it actually was. Um, it was very, uh, antiquated and old, um, and did not reflect the current environment. And so it's taken a little while. To actually discover some of the systems that are out there and being utilized. Then we also introduced our help ticketing system to the departments and offices. Um, and then established, uh, relationships with all the Greenlee County partners and vendors, which include the state. Uh, we've been working with the state quite heavily on, on some cybersecurity initiatives for the county. Okay, next phase. Um, under improved security, reliability and resilience, the first step was to review the disaster recovery plan. Which was a little, little bit dated. Uh, we've done that. We've also been working to establish the cybersecurity plan. Um, we've gotten a good way through feeling, um, confident about that plan. Uh, we're still putting some of the finishing touches on, on things we want to do with cybersecurity. And some of that is based upon the improvements. That we are doing to the environment. Um, we've also been working to make sure and establish, uh, the data backup plan and ensure that all systems that are out there, that there is a. Um, a reliable and effective backup strategy and that there's testing of those backups happening. Again, mostly completed and most of those systems are, are where we want them to be. We have run into a couple, uh, recently, we found that we're being backed up in an alternate method using a, a physical hard, external hard drive. And we're working with the vendor right now to, uh, identify a better strategy other than having to rotate a physical hard drive in and out of the environment. Um, hardware updates, uh, there's still a lot of this that we were, were. Put into these FY, uh, for, for purchase. There was a lot of, uh, server aging. Uh, UPSs that needed to be bought. Those are the uninterrupted, power supplies, the battery backup systems. For the servers, um, the county wifi, uh, project. Um, the, the wifi, you know, is, is aged and, and acts accordingly. Um, HVAC, uh, as we've had quite a number of, uh, problems with the HVAC system in the, in the data center. Um, and then cameras and sensors for those server rooms, um. There, where we've now got those cameras and sensors, they've been purchased. And we're going to be deploying them. But all, there was a lot of these hardware updates that. Were, you know, there were a lot of things that were new and very shiny in the, in the Greenlee County IT environment, but there was also a lot of things that had not. That had been neglected and that were older and needed to have something done. Um, network optimizations, we've been working to improve, uh, the flow of, of the network. You have a very large network that goes all the way down to Duncan Annex, close the airport. And, um, and we're, we're improving the security and performance of how data flows through the network. Um, and I think we're starting to see some, uh, optimizations there. Though there's some, some things that, that still need to be done, including upgrading the internet connection. Um, creation of high availability architectures for critical systems. This is one of the ones that. We got in and were, were really, uh, felt needed to happen, uh, quickly. Uh, unfortunately, we had one outage and we'll talk about that a little bit. Uh, of one of those systems right off the bat, uh, the hardware failed. Um, and we're, um, in a situation right now where we're, um, kind of on pins and needles with the sheriff's, uh, spillman system. Um, because it's also in a situation where it's a single point of failure server. But we have, um, uh, gotten approval for the project. To work with Motorola to actually implement a high availability architecture that will eliminate that single point of failure and then, uh, make it much more reliable and resilient. Okay, next slide. I don't know who that is.
Are we being hacked?
Somebody's got an ad running. Okay. While we've been going through these phases and, uh, well, actually we were on the enhanced functionality phase. I want to talk a little bit about that. We've started a little bit of this in starting to reach out to the departments, um. But this has been delayed, um, on the, the previous slide, if you would. Um, simply because we're, we're still trying to finish the first two, um, phases of this before we get heavily into opening up the doors to, okay, no, let's. Put more stuff on top of the IT department and IT environment before we have, uh, the resiliency and security, you know, implemented, uh, in that. But as we do this, uh, the plan will be, and we've, uh, we started it in this previous budget cycle. Um, that we'll meet with each department and office to understand their objectives and, and goals for the upcoming year. And then we will help them prepare a project, including a, a budget for making that happen. Um, and so this is, you know, the, the going into, uh, the spring of this coming year, this is something that we're hope, we, we really think we'll be. Focusing on a lot because a lot of these other projects will already be completed in place. And then as we get through this, um, one of the things we want to do is establish that digital strategy working group for the county. That looks at, from a county macro perspective. Um, what is the digital roadmap for the county? You know, where does, what are the county's, uh, objectives, goals? How do we meet that with IT? And that includes even the outward facing, like the website project that we, uh, have, are in the middle of right now. Next slide. While that was going on, we were also doing trouble tickets and, um, and right here, what you see is a graphic. There were a thousand seventy-two tickets that we, uh, had entered into our system between one October and August eighteenth last Friday. And of that, a thousand and, uh, a thousand thirty of them are, uh, closed. And, uh, we have twenty-one open and eight in progress. So we have twenty-nine tickets that were actively, we are working on. Um, there are six tickets that are waiting some kind of action from the client, some response back. Five tickets that are, are awaiting a third party outside, you know, vendor to do. One ticket that's on hold. It's just we, that's where we park something that we don't want to forget about, but the, but. You, the customer has determined it's, it's not something to be worked on right now. And then one waiting for parts, um, and the, the one waiting for parts is the, the AV getting back our, uh, AV system. So overall, you know, in the course of, uh, those, uh, the months that we've been working on this project. Um, so eleven and, uh, ten and a half months. We've had about, if you click next, an average of about a hundred tickets per month that are going through the system and, and being closed. With that, you can see the breakout. We track all of this. How many low priority tickets, medium, high, urgent tickets? And the average, you know, resolution time across it. Some tickets are resolved in a matter of minutes. Um, and some tickets, you know, have to take two weeks, depending on, on, uh, what is happening with the ticket or more. So, but all across the board, if you look at the resolution statistics, um, they're pretty, pretty solid. Um, you're not getting, you know, resolution averages that are going, uh, as, as, you know, when we came into this environment. Resolution was sometimes weeks, uh, to get something resolved. as, as, you know, when we came into this environment, resolution was sometimes weeks, uh, to get something resolved. So overall, the, the completion rate, um, I'm pretty happy with, with the team. Um, next slide. There were some bumps in the road though, along the way, and I didn't want to talk about those. Uh, one is, uh, we get back last, uh, late fall, we had the Tyler School ERP, formerly Infinite Visions outage. Um, it was, uh, for us, one of those worst case, you know, uh, scenarios. Um, where we had, uh, everything go wrong in this. It was an, uh, a failure that was in part caused by our third party, uh, vendor Tyler. Um, we had warned them that this system was already showing hardware failures and we would like to take it into a VM environment. They insisted that we needed to upgrade, they needed to upgrade the Tyler Vision server first before, um, they could move it into a VM environment or would even discuss it. Because Tyler Visions hadn't been upgraded for like two plus years. And, uh, so we said, okay, um, and they, they began the upgrade and, um, the server began to cascade fail. Um, and when that happened, the engineer from Tyler, he, he was one of their more junior engineers. It was like second time having to do a, a big upgrade like this. And so he got lost where he was in the process of it. It corrupted a bunch of databases. Um, we worked with Tyler to try to restore a backup out of the Barracuda system. Unfortunately, the Barracuda backup system had not been configured for cloud restitution. And it just went on and on and on. It was just like two weeks of, oh my goodness. Um, so in the end, the result from it was we stood up a brand new Tyler server in the re, the VM environment and, um, it got all upgraded and, uh, we were able to restore painstakingly, pulling out piece by piece of it out of the Barracuda system. Uh, all but I think five days worth of data that had been lost, uh, in, in the system. So it, it turned out in the end, not as bad as we, uh, could have been. Um, but it was a very, very long two weeks for my team. They worked, uh, very, very long days working with Tyler. Trying desperately to, uh, restore, um, this system to operation. This is, you know, one of the two primary systems that we were worried about that had, um, a single point of failure. And unfortunately it failed like a month and a half into us being on board before that project to, uh, push it into a VM could be accomplished. But that's been eliminated. That problem, uh, will, will not happen in the future. It is now running in a high availability environment. And, uh, there will not be, uh, that kind of a loss. Both the backup systems have been appropriately configured for that system as well as the failover VM capability. Um, boardroom AV issues, um, another frustrating problem that, that happened. Uh, we took on the, the challenge of, of trying to, um, do more with that, uh, the AV system that was in here. And as we did that, there kept being this problem that would arise. And unfortunately it ended up being a, the core of the system, uh, was having an intermittent failure. You'd boot it, sometimes it would cut, it would work beautifully and sometimes it would not. And there was no outward indication, one way or another, of whether it was in, in good mode or not. So we'd come in the day before, uh, the board reading of eight o'clock in the morning, get it all up and working, shut everything off for the night and come in the next morning and boot and nothing would work and it was very frustrating. Um, uh, brought in our AV, uh, subject matter expert. He worked on the system. Um, and finally identified that it was the core was progressively failing worse and worse and worse. Uh, that system, um, was a system that was no longer in, uh, manufacturer. Um, and was very expensive to try to find one, you know, on the market. So to replace the whole thing would have been, you know, significant amount of money, over $10,000 to, you know, just replace the whole core and everything. To replace that one component by itself, what is like $3,700 is the cheapest one we could find. Uh, that somebody had still in an inventory somewhere. So instead we, um, uh, worked with the manufacturer that we could send, because it's a good piece of equipment. We sent it back to them, uh, got an RMA and they're repairing that piece of equipment for a fraction of the cost that it would take to, to replace it. And in one of the future FYs, we'll definitely want to take an address, you know, upgrading the AV stack, uh, that is over there. Um, it, to get us running and including what we're running on today. Bits lent the Greenlee County, uh, a couple thousand dollars worth of, of equipment to be able to replace that core with some of the equipment that we have. Um, so that's what we're running on right now is, is the equipment that we've lent you. Until we can get that piece back from the manufacturer. Um, HVAC problems, um, it, I guess it was a hot summer. But we've had, um, significant problems with the HVAC inside of the server room. Uh, which has, um, caused us some, you know, long days, weekends, you know, coming at night. Um, monitoring temperatures and trying to determine which servers to sacrificially turn off and that type of thing. I think that's finally getting resolved. Um, some of the, the HVAC systems were replaced. We still, I think, need a second one, uh, last I heard. You put in there, because you always want to have redundancy. Even if you have one big enough to handle a whole room, you shouldn't just rely on that because they can fail. And, uh, we just happen to have a, a twin failure. But again, I want to, you know, compliment my team for their willingness. They were coming in on weekends and evenings and all sorts of hours. Whenever the, the HVAC systems would just stop working and we'd get that, uh, indications that the, the server tempers were up. So that one's, that one's starting to be resolved, but it, it, it caused some problems and it caused some outages in the county. Cause there were times where we had to go to Mr. appear and say, you tell me which servers I can turn off because we have to turn something off. To be able to keep the spillman server, which is the most critical system, the, the sheriff's, uh, computer aided dispatch system. We have to keep that one up and running. And so we, we just said, you, you got to tell us which ones we can turn off. Um, and, uh, and I think that was a good, it resulted in, in a good working relationship on that. Um, we also ran into a problem with replacing the old way of doing things. Um, there were expectations on us as a contractor by, I think county personnel in the past, whether it came to you know, purchasing authority, like, you know, we're, we're not county employees. We can't obligate your funds. We can't go purchase things for you. Um, with, you know, that, that has to be done by a county employee. It's, it's just the way that, that things work. Or, um, signing agreements on behalf of the county, you know, it's not something that we as contractors can't do. We can't sign a contract on behalf of the county, obligating the county to some course of action or some agreement. So, so just there was a bumps, I think in, in that, and I think those have started to really work themselves out as we've, we've worked with the county administration, uh, to, to, you know, identify how do we do this policy work and, and, and figure out how to replace some of the functions that the IT director here at the county used to do. He used to sign those agreements. He used to do the procurements, et cetera. And, uh, so that's, uh, really, uh, running a lot smoother these days. Um, and then finally, you know, personnel turnover. We've had some, uh, significant turnover of our personnel in this region. Um, starting, you know, with the original, uh, gentleman that was going to come down and be the IT lead here. He was, you know, I had two decades of experience. I've been working for our company for a year and a half and, and I was, you know, solid knew that Joe would be able to handle the environment. And unfortunately, good for him, unfortunately for, for Greenlee County. About the time he was supposed to move from Utah down to here, his wife moved back home. And, uh, you know, along with his kids. So he felt like he couldn't rock that boat and pick her up and move her to Greenlee County from Utah and needed to work on his family. And I can't fault him for that. And we've had a lot of other turnovers that were the result of, of various, either professionally, they wanted to go into a different field or, um, they needed to deal with their family situation and move back home or whatever it was. That is starting to now resolve. Um, it's been highly unusual. Um, our company, we don't tend to have turnover of employees and, and so it's been a challenge for us to deal with. Recruitment's always a challenge and especially recruitment in rural areas. But, um, we have through all of that, even though the personnel kept changing over. As you saw in the graph, ticket completion rates stayed pretty constant. We picked it up with people who were remote. We flew people in. We at our expense traveled them in and put them up in horrifically expensive Greenlee County apartments, um, just to try to, um, make sure that your service levels didn't drop. And, uh, and then the charts reflect that, that we were continuing our closure rates. Uh, in fact, the last two months have been, uh, some of the highest closure rates, uh, that we've had in the, in the, uh, ten and a half months. So those are some of the bumps in the road that I wanted to address. Now going forward, some of the county projects for this FY that, uh, we have on the books and we're excited about putting in place. One is a redundant VM server to be loaded, located down at the county annex. We are getting, you know, that whole idea of single points of failure. So it's good that we're now loading servers like the Tyler, uh, school ERP system into our virtual machine server that's downstairs. But it's bad that it's the only virtual machine server around and it's, it's all in, and all the servers basically are in one physical location where if HVAC goes out or anything happens, we have a, an outage. So we have been working with the, the county administrator to get that approved. And you allocated the funds to buy a new, another large VM server that we can place at the county annex. That will improve the performance, the reliability, and most importantly, the fault tolerance of the server environment. So it's going to be a fantastic, um, asset for the county. And that, that server room down at the, the Duncan, uh, annex is a beautiful server room. And it's got one server in it and it's larger than the one we have downstairs. And so we looked at that and went, oh yes, this is the place. And, uh, and, and it's really going to be a, a, a good place to put this, the backup servers for the county. Um, speed upgrade. So we've looked into and, you know, the county is running on a hundred megabit per second connection. Which is kind of small for these days for the number of employees you have. And so we dug in a little bit to why is that the case? Cause we thought it was a Valley Telecom, you know, they're, they're providing the fiber. Why it thought that's, they were the ISP, uh, they disabused us of that notion and we dug into some more, found it's your ISP, your internet service provider is actually a cooperative agreement with Graham County for a GovNet connection. I guess that was let even before Vince, the previous IT director, you know, was on board and it's been there forever and, and it probably was a great thing when it was put in place. It's not a great thing now. It's very expensive for the level of service you get. And we got quotes from Valley Telecom to upgrade to the one gigabit per second or half a gig, if you prefer to go down to that. But, um, but it'll be less expensive to get 10 times the, the internet speed. So we're, that's one of the projects we're excited about because that's going to alleviate some of the problems. Um, county wifi modernization, uh, as I mentioned before, the wifi is very old, the, the, the devices. And those radios deteriorate over time and we've, we've noticed a real problem with, uh, with them. Uh, we've been working with, with Austin, um, to modernize that and to find the right hardware that was both, um, solid and reliable, but at the same time cost effective. Uh, because the Cisco equipment was very expensive and would have cost you not just one time purchase, but annually you were going to have to pay a huge amount of money. So we, we've, um, settled on an, uh, an HP Aruba, uh, setup. But that, that project will be, uh, rolled out here this fall. Um, replacement of about 30% of county desktops. We're going to be replacing lots of desktops. You had a very aging fleet in some areas of these. And, uh, we've, uh, worked with the county administrator to establish that, you know, we'll replace about 20% of the laptops for year, lap, uh, you know, desktop. These machines, personal computers have a lifespan effectively about five years. Um, and should be replaced in servers about every seven. So if you take the five years, about every, you know, year, about 20% on a rolling basis, you can just kind of budget for how many should be replaced. We're doing about 30% this year simply because some were so old. We needed to get, um, the runs that are just really old replaced along with the, the first batch of that 20%. We're also going to be pu, rolling out, like I said, the cameras and sensors for the data center, uh, to provide better security on your data centers. Next slide. We've got some very large projects for the Greenlee County Sheriff's Office that we, um, have identified and, and, uh, working to roll out. One is the active directory domain for the grant, uh, the, the Greenlee County Sheriff's Office. Um, that's going to include also a print server, um, uh, so that, that their printing and the, all their active directory, everything. Their security will all be within the, the data center over there, the dispatch data center. But it'll be, um, its own domain under the county's forest. Um, that's going to improve security and performance. We're going to be upgrading the battery backup and power system at the, uh, the dispatch data center over there. There's just two little not very good quality, uh, UPSs in that rack. Um, and we won't, we're going to replace them with a, a piece of Metra, just as the same as the, the one downstairs and the one down at the Duncan Annex. Um, and then the spillman, uh, we talked about the high availability architecture, architecture upgrade and deployment. That project will be done by Motorola in conjunction with us. That will, um, not only provide performance improvements, but more importantly, it will eliminate the spillman being only on one physical server, which is now, I think it's six years old, the, the spillman server. And, uh, and so, so we'll, we'll not have that single point of failure in the future and beyond new servers. Um, and then, um, also there's a, a possibility, uh, we've been working with the sheriff, uh, talking about, uh, some of the laptops they use in their vehicles and also the reception they get off of the cards in the, in the laptops to possibly look at putting vehicle antennas, uh, in so that, uh, not only will they get laptops that, that perform better, but also, um, have better reception in their, in their vehicles when they're out and about in the county. So these are some of the, the, the big projects that for this FY that we want to get through and accomplish. You can see it's, it's a pretty extensive list, um, and we had, and to get budget approved for these things. Uh, but now we have that budget and we're, we're moving forward on them. Next slide. Any questions?
I don't, I had a couple written down with your other slides answering this question, so I, I.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Well, I think I'll let Derek say his comments and then I might have a question for you after Derek's lines.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um. I will let you know that, that we got a call from an individual asking something about the contract. We attempted to reach out, that individual never heard back from them. I, I don't know why somebody would, would contact the sheriff, talk about countywide IT services, but we attempted to track that down. Years ago, we had an IT director that would, would often come to my office, county attorney's office and, and use words that started with giga or mega or something and then something I didn't know what it meant. And, and I'd often tell Bob, I said, Bob, what I, what I want is something to get me home quicker, closer to five than I do now. Um, what the giga mega, whatever it is, I, I don't know and I, I don't understand. But there have been some frustrations in this first year of onboarding with bits. And some of it is, as you can tell, um, what we want is we want it to work perfectly. We want our end user experience to be seamless, uh, without concerns whatsoever. Um, as you already heard, some of that would not be possible as we began to go in and, and address some of the fundamentals. This is why the end user experience wasn't always what we wanted. Things are getting better. Um, I appreciate that Mr. Kwame, um, pointed out there, but some hurdles, some, um, some pretty big hurdles. To many of us on, on the, this user side, it simply shows up, I can't get into visions. I can't do whatever it is I wanted to do. And heaven knows, we've had our blips as we try to broadcast this meeting to your constituents. And they've been uncomfortable for everyone, um, including this personnel, uh. Mr. Kwame and I have had several, uh, deep conversations about how this has got to work. Um, one of the things that, that we gave them sort of a disadvantage coming into is that there were both high expectations and a high level of scrutiny for this new way of doing business. And in some cases, there appeared to be some, uh, desired failure on, on their success. I really appreciated them working through that type of an environment. And my recommendation would, you've seen what what they've addressed, you've seen what they're working on and you've seen the projects that are ahead of us. It's my recommendation, we don't change horses in the middle of the race. No doubt, some other group might come in and say, your priorities wrong, we should do this instead of that. That that certainly could be, but consistency has value as well. Particularly when you're when you're are changing a paradigm of how IT services are delivered. One of the things that that I appreciate and and Mr. Kwame highlighted, but we had an issue that was not an IT issue and that was HVAC failure. Our our cooling system, the the server room tends needs to be very, very cold by by relative to all other places. And it was bits that that noticed the problem, they recognized the risk. And so there were there were questions, you know, what do we shut down? And we very quickly established a priority, we've got to keep still available, that's our emergency software and program environment that needs to be going. Next was our ability to keep track of our our funds, visions. Everything else from there took a lesser priority. So as we went and worked through those things and I got a call once that the server room was approaching ninety degrees. We turned off all the servers but Spillman, we even turned off visions at that point and within about an hour it was back down to seventy something, I believe, degrees. They generated tremendous amount of heat. That was not a IT problem. That was a hardware air conditioning problem. But our our contractor alerted us to it, hoped to form a game plan so that we could minimize the damage. This was a fairly easy call to make in terms of convenience versus cost. There's hundreds of thousands of dollars of equipment in our data center and we we simply could not let that that ruin. He also highlighted something through the context and the lens of bits that we struggled with as well. And that is recruitment. I know that even our friends up the hill struggle with recruitment in the IT world. It is a very competitive world. One of the the tenants of the contract is that by by having bits take on the full responsibility for IT personnel and customer satisfaction, our satisfaction was their concern. We one time I considered sort of a a split hybrid model where we would keep some employees and the bits would provide a lot of those other people who we don't ever see the names on the screen. But we knew already from having struggled with recruitment for several years prior to this change that getting the right people here physically that need to be here and getting the backup behind them was a daunting and almost insurmountable challenge. It's gotten worse, not better over time. And so I I would sort of take us back, not quite a year and realize some of the hurdles we were facing. I expect that our our user experience will continue to improve as some of the fundamentals are addressed, as some of the, you know, I honestly, I didn't know what a VM server was. If I'm really honest, I'm still not sure I do. But at least I know what the VM stands for. And so but as some of those things come online, as we begin to address some of the fundamentals. I think we're going to see the user experience continue to improve. I was very impressed with the the statistics that I've and I've been tracking this throughout the year, but the statistics on ticket clearance, when something comes in, they get on it. In some cases, we're aware that that users had not gone through the ticketing system. Where they play they place a call or or in some cases attempt to do the the thing themselves, whether that be replacing something or whatever. It's one thing if you turn off your computer and turn it back on, that's that's what we all do, right? But notwithstanding some of those environmental challenges, the the ticketing system has been, I I see chuckles from people who live like I do with a lot more questions than answers. But nevertheless, that that process has become more refined and become more reliable as we begin to use it more. I say not reliable, we as users are becoming more reliable on it, are relied on it. And so my recommendation is that we do continue the contract. The language does change, it was a one year thing. We structured this in such a way that that should either party decide that we need to part ways. You need a good long runway on something like this, you can't just say we'll switch in three weeks. And so the notice periods in here are long on purpose. You'll see that if we want to renegotiate part of the contract, that's an eight month on ramp. The cost this year to the county is the same cost as it was last year, there was no no rise in cost. That's not always going to be the case. We know that, the cost of good personnel, the cost of of what they do, we may ask them to take on more for us. And so I expect at some point the cost will rise. Things seldom get cheaper over time. But I think this contract represents for us continuity, it represents for us increasing reliability. It represents for us structures and documentation that will work now and going into the future. And I expect that that the bumps, which we knew, if you recall, I was very clear, we expect some bumps to happen. And it did, some of them turned out to be big bumps. But I expect those will become lesser and lesser over time. So our our staff recommendations that we renew the contract as presented.
Do you gentlemen have any questions? Just comment, I I have one and 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 yes, Derek, I agree that, you know, Rome wasn't built in a in a day and and you can't expect to solve all the problems in a day either. But Mr. Kwame, in the next period of time, the next one or two years, will you be able to solve most, if not all, the issues as discovered as you have been under contract by the county? You believe that you have the expertise to do that?
Yes, we definitely have the expertise to do it on staff. You saw the the staffing plan that we actually have for the county. I know that everybody looks for the green shirt running around in the environment. But they're just the tip of the iceberg that is actually doing support. And so the the personnel, you know, if I go down the line and you know, Zean Zarif's got two and a half decades and is is a highly regarded Microsoft engineer. Damar Bowman is got two and a half decades, comes to us from Zion's Bank and BYU before that. David Musial worked for the city of Rockford as assistant administrator and then worked for the Rockford, Illinois School District as their head of IT. The people that we've got on staff, they have the capabilities and skills to get it done. And some of it has been waiting to build a budget because these purchases were not insignificant. Get those done and others are picking, you know, when you when you have an IT environment as complex as the Greenlee County IT Department, you don't just go in and start slamming in changes, you don't know what you're going to break. And so as we have gained control of the environment, documented it, which took longer than than we thought, simply because lots of stuff wasn't documented. And as we've done that, we now have a complete more, much more complete picture. And I you never want to say hundred percent complete because you always, you know, oh gee, well, there's a switch sitting in somebody's closet you didn't know about. But but we have a a nearly complete picture of what your ICU department is. And that's why we're going after these upgrade projects in this FY. Is because we 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 feel that we can do it now with an appropriate plan that won't cause those major outages and resolve the problems that were inherent in the system when we walked in the door.
Thank you. No other questions or motion be in order?
I move that we approve of the renewal of the bits contract as presented.
A second motion. Here we have a motion in second, incident, any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye, 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 motion passes. Thank you very, very much. We will now go to agenda item six. And Mr. Sumner, you have asked to speak on this.
I'm Sumner, Greenlee County Sheriff. Sir Chairman, members of the board and staff, on this particular item, kind of climbed and escalated into a point it really shouldn't be at, honestly. It was just a a simple issue I brought up about the the minutes and some verbiage there. What I requested, as you can see on the packet I just gave you, the first one shows your minutes for approval at that meeting that I spoke about. The next page shows what is currently on your website right now as we speak, that shows what the minutes are, which just completely struck my comments altogether, including even my my name, which as you know is a violation of of law there because the person speaking has to be documented in your minutes. The next one's a memorandum from the Derek Apier to you. Speaking about the options to go back and correct that because as the law says, the minutes do have to reflect something that someone did speak on this actionable item. On this, the reference is ARS eleven, title eleven, instead of title thirty eight. On your agenda, I think it says title thirty eight, which is accurate. The last page is my memorandum I just created to send to you. This is in response to the one just prior, basically, your clerk of the board of supervisors should have been the one to write this memo to you statutorily. Clerk of the board of supervisors is a statutory position, honestly, responsible responsible for the minutes. As you're well aware of, I do see the agenda form has dual authorship, administrator and clerk. However, this really should be coming from the clerk of the board to correct this. Going back, just to clarify, I did speak on one thing, Mr. Chairman, I went back and listened to the time, it was three hours thirteen minutes forty seconds. It was a long meeting where you said, let's just remove the part of quotes sheriff hadn't had enough time, take that part out and that'll suffice. Which I thought that was what was going to happen. Instead, the entire entire comments and me speaking were stricken completely. So what I asked about was, that was a small piece I talked about. The rest of it honestly was the fact that the elected officials did not have a chance to see the salary scale and neither did you. It was not part of the packet, mistakes happen, it was an inadvertent issue, not a big thing, all right? It didn't come to you, didn't, wasn't part of your board packet. But when that happened, that was really what I spoke about and yet it kind of got camped out on this issue right here, which I just simply made one comment to say there remove this piece or include your part. So if you look at option C, you have option A and B that was sent by Mr. Apier, which again should be the clerk of the board addressing you on this. But option C I put right there at the bottom, it's literally just taking your minutes, the very first ones that came before you and just interjecting one piece right there. And read that out and and you can see it's italicized, agreed, they did not have enough time to review since the salary chart was not part of their board packet material. The board and then it continued on, that's it. It's simply acknowledging the fact that it wasn't part of the board packet material, it needed to be tabled and the rest of it's still accurate that you wanted the other elected officials to be able to see this before it was ever even brought before you even voted on in the first place. So this is really just kind of blowing my mind and how spun out this one little thing got on on simple some minutes that I just wanted to address real quick and just have the accuracy there. I think option C is the best option, the accuracy, just saying my comment can stand as it was, your comment can stand as it was that you acknowledged as well, we didn't have it as part of our packet. We would like to table this and we would like the other elected official to see it. So there's another option there, honestly. It's a, I wasn't watching the time and didn't hear it being, so sorry about that. I don't know how far I just went over because I was waiting for the audible, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You recall that your clerk was not in attendance on the July sixth meeting and that clerk by Ms. Garcia, who's not here today. I was present the July sixth meeting and and I am also deputy clerk. But nevertheless, I I think what's important here is that this is your meeting and the minutes will reflect what took place in that meeting. Those minutes are prepared by the clerk or deputy clerk as assigned by the clerk. And you approve those. This really is a board function. The instructions we got, if we misinterpreted them, we apologize, but it appeared that that we had been instructed to remove reference, the statute requires that we not remove reference to who spoke and what they spoke about. That was the request at the meeting was to remove that item and and so we went on. But nevertheless, you've been given options. You can simply direct the clerk to to make reference in the minutes as she sees fit. Or you could decide on one of the options, whichever you want. This is your meeting, your
They all sound good to me. Same thing.
David, I personally like option B and clear and we move on and I hope good would be, so a motion would be in order?
The motion would be to amend the minutes for July sixth meeting to include the language as spelled out in option B in the memorandum.
July sixth or July twenty sixth? Sorry.
It is the July sixth meeting. Yes, okay, it was commented on on July twenty sixth.
I didn't bother twenty sixth, I'm like, hey, hold on. All right, go ahead, David, sorry.
There would entertain a motion.
I saw move that we revised the the minutes of July sixth as presented. Option B and I was like that.
If we have motion and then second, is there any discussion? Hearing now, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye, 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 motion passes. We will now go to agenda item seven, Mr. Sumner, you asked to talk on seven A.
Chairman, this is Tim Sumner, I'll pass on that, introduce and follow up the chief financial officer. I'll just wait on that one.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Apier.
Thank you. I'm not going to spend any time on state budgeting legislative items or let you know that the counties have counties around the state have submitted proposals for consideration at CSA Legislative Summit. Some of those may be pared down before we get there, the managers have have received their first glimpse of it, if you will. They the proposals were introduced at our last county manager's meeting by staff. And in some cases, the counties who proposed it added some insights to what what maybe motivated the proposal and so forth. We will learn more at our September meeting. As we do always, we will spend some time here locally in the meeting to go over those proposals and how they may touch on Greenland County and the effect on our policies and what we want to do going forward. Certainly, we've encouraged you to study those as we approach the summit. That is a an extremely dynamic and effective process to to narrow the focus of CSA in the upcoming legislative session. Staff goes through and spends a tremendous amount of time preparing those proposals. So they're digestible and and we understand the the policy implications of them. So we will be covering that at a subsequent meeting prior to the summit. We don't have any other budget or legislative issues at the moment, so with that, I turn it over to this figure over for the
Today, our board meeting. And that looks like all we have for the rest of the month. Six, the twenty sixth, we do have cattle farmers meeting at the South Annex and that's Saturday, November sixth. We didn't put a time.
I have like a think you have me started, Jan, registration starts.
Um, going to September, our offices are closed Monday, due to Labor Day. So we will have our board meeting on Wednesday. Starting at eight.
Is that, okay, yes. Yes, yes, behind a month, I'm sorry.
Our county fair starts on the fourteenth through the seventeenth. County managers on the fifteenth, our second board meeting on September nineteenth. The twentieth, we have small counties and ECO and WIPA. CSA Board of Directors on the twenty first. That's all I have for the month of September, going into October.
There's a WIR board meeting on the thirtieth and the first. That's, I mean, on the first and the second, excuse me, that's a Sunday and a Monday.
Of September. Yes.
Our first board meeting in October is, it was pushed back to Thursday, the fifth at eight. Francie School starts their fall break, the first two weeks in October. Francie School starts their fall break, the first two weeks in October. CSA Summit starts on the eleventh, the thirteenth, and that's in Blackstone. Our second board meeting on the seventeenth at eight. With on the eighteenth.
Derek, I don't know if you want to take a look at this, but maybe, maybe a suggestion that we move the seventeenth of October board meeting to the twenty fourth, giving us a little time between our first board meeting on the fifth, that we have the CSA Legislative Summit. I don't know if that makes any sense, but it's just a suggestion. Going from the seventeenth to the twenty fourth, but either one works.
Anything for you, Ron.
Doesn't help me anybody, I thought I'd give them time to.
Bianca just pointed out to me, we would appreciate that very much as staff, that give us a week to put an agenda together. And we still have plenty of time in between that and our first meeting in November.
Just about that.
And we appreciate it, thank you.
Oh, thank you. If there's anything else to go on the calendar or events, if not, we'll go to agenda item eight, consent agenda.
So move where they approve the consent agendas, coach.
I'll say that.
Here we have motion is second, is there any discussion on any of the items? Seeing now, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye, 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 motion passes. We will now go to agenda item nine, Supervisory Reports, Mr. Gomez.
I really don't have anything. The CSA folks need to get on the road and leave anyway, so. I'm good.
I I don't, I don't have anything, sure, it's fine.
The only thing I have is is I did go to the the rural water and which I know Greg sits on. You know, water, it's always very, very complex. It's it's a very emotional and engaged subject. And I I appreciate the efforts of the committee, what they're doing there. And it's going to be interesting to see the solutions or some of the methods that they come up with, maybe solving. If you can solve the water problems in the state, so that's my report. And and I really appreciate Craig representing all the counties there on on our behalf, and that's my report. If there's nothing else come before the board that completes our agenda, this meeting is adjourned.